Town of Commerce, Scott County School Board to Orders.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, we would like to announce the Scott County Schools' October Volunteers of the Month. And as always, we very appreciate your time and your effort that you give to the students of Scott County. First, from Birchfield Elementary, Jason Van Up. Fairview Elementary, Brian Strunk. Huntsville Elementary, Mr. Matt's Brian, Ms. Brian's Detective.
Mr. Brian, yay!
Well, I didn't see you over there. Thank you, thank you.
From Huntsville Middle, Erica Vaden. From Robbins Elementary, Heath Shannon. From Winfield Elementary, Coach Mark Burke.
We've got one name on there.
It can't be here, should we?
Awesome.
All good.
Close down, get me out of here.
Except for Mark.
Thank you.
Houston Burke.
Thank you, guys. Also, at this time, we would like to do the October Scott County Chamber of Commerce Stand Student of the Month, Mr. Peyton Alexander Mason, seventeen-year-old son of Amy Day Douglas Mason of the Huntsville community. He was selected by the Scott High School staff as the October Stand Student of the Month. Peyton is a member of the Beta Club and the Oakwood Bound Program. Peyton has followed a more rigorous course of study and will graduate under the Tennessee Stars Program and will receive an honor to the moment. Peyton has completed several dual-credit classes and has earned a GPA of 3.9583. Peyton will graduate under the Tennessee Promise Program and his dream is to become an anesthesiologist.
Mr. Hall. I'd like to invite the board to our annual town hall for our youth. They're going to be doing presentations, everybody's came to them a couple times. But if you would, we'd very much appreciate it. Thank you. Want to choose that?
And it's at the Boys and Girls Club?
Yes. I'm sorry about that. I can send a nuber for you, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation for Volunteer Student of the Month.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would love to address the board? We'll go to the school principals' reports. Mr. Shannon, we will let you go first.
Just wanted to take a moment to let everyone know that school's gotten off to a great start since our fall break. It's a much-needed and wonderful, wonderful time for the students and staff. They all came back very rejuvenated, refreshed, and they're doing well. Couple dates of note for us, coming up on October the nineteenth, we've got our Retired Teacher Dinner at Robbins at twelve o'clock. November the ninth, we've got our Veterans Day Program at Robbins at eight-thirty in the morning. And put an invitation in all of the board members' mailboxes and anyone else that would like to attend is welcome. So some other things that I wanted to mention also is we had our parent-teacher conference this past Tuesday, and by all estimations in the sign-in sheet, we had one-hundred-and-ninety-two students who was represented by parents or guardians, and that's well over half of our student population, so it was a very, very good turnout. We wanted to thank also the South Scott County Fire Department for coming down to the Robbins School today for demonstration. The students learned a lot and had a really good time. They enjoyed it. Wanted to congratulate the Robbins cross-country team. The boys finished first in the county, the girls were the second-place team. Coach Johnny Bird does a wonderful job. Also, congratulations to our football team. They won the district championship in the regular season Monday, October the first. They're playing again tonight at six-thirty down at Robbins with Midway for the opportunity to go and represent our system for the regional championship. So Coach Carroll, Johnny West, and Doug Lloyd does a wonderful job, as does volunteer Heath Shannon. The last thing, I wanted to make sure and express our appreciation for Mr. Hall, Ms. Smith, and everybody that has worked with us to help to develop the food locker pantry, if you will, with the second harvest. Mike Silcox and the men have been down in the last few days working to get that area ready, and it looks like it will serve our community very, very well. Unless anyone's got any questions for me, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Goodwin, I think you're supposed to go next.
Thank you. Yes, I was meaning to get out of here. My daughter is at Jamestown at York Running, so I'm going to head down there. We wanted to say we appreciate you all at the school, believe. I have found that to always be a really good conference. We always come back with lots of good information, so we had a really good time there. Coming back, like I said, with a lot of things to implement at our schools. Same thing, he said, parent-teacher conferences was great. I just thank the parents so much. One-hundred-and-twenty-six of our students was represented, and we really appreciate all those parents coming out and taking time out of their busy schedule to come see us and get those lines of communication open and going between home and school. At our open house, we had told our parents this was going to be a year of a lot of fundraising and sales and things like that, because we have some needs there that we need to take care of, and a lot of them have shown that support, so we're trying to get the word out of all the different things that we're going to be doing. The money is being raised for, number one, some safety issues that we want to take care of. It's going to be set up a little bit the way Scott High has theirs that needs to be taken care of in that front entrance. The other is some technology updates and needs that we want to take care of whenever we are having these open houses and things like that. The parents are coming out, and we don't have the... we have areas to put them that our technology doesn't work to meet those areas, and the only places that they'll work is too small. So this is a wonderful issue to have, because the parents are coming out responding, and we appreciate that. So we are having to change some of our things in order to meet that, so that is a good thing. So some of the things that we're going to be doing to raise money right now, we have a candy sale that's going on. This Friday night, we are having film on the field, so we'll be sending out all calls on that. The students will be watching Facing the Giants. Of course, you cannot charge for that, but we are asking for donations. There will be concessions and things like that. We're going to have smores and some different things, so bring a blanket, bring something to sit on. And again, Facing the Giants, if you haven't seen that, I mean, that's a good family, clean film, it's inspirational, and so everybody can come out and have a nice, clean time on a Friday night. And I know we don't have a football match at Scott High, so that was one of the reasons we coordinated that. The next Friday, we'll be having our Fall Festival from five o'clock to eight with lots of games and different activities for people to do. There will be a dollar admission at the door, and then there will be tickets that you'll have to buy in order to participate in a lot of the games and things that's going on, so we invite everyone out for that. Also want the parents to know that for the next two weeks, Patty Swain will be in our school. She will be talking with all of the students about personal body safety and going through that program that she does every year. That is a wonderful thing for our students, so please talk to them about that whenever they're coming home telling you about some of the things that they're learning. That opens up some lines of communication there that is much needed. For right now, that is all that I have, unless you have something for me. Thank you very much.
We have one of our Volunteers of the Month that just came, so we have from Huntsville Middle School, Ms. Erica Vaden.
Yeah.
Come on up, Erica, you'll come right here.
Thank you. What do I do?
Turn your body, turn your... You just did.
Oh, I messed it up.
Do another one.
I did, how's my hair? Thank you.
Ms. Richter.
Thank you. As Mr. Shannon said, everybody's back from the break and well-rested. We rewarded our teachers back the first day of break by letting them stay until six-thirty for parent-teacher conferences, so it was nice to come back. Again, everybody came back and were ready to go, but we did have parent-teacher conferences on Monday night. We had well over three-hundred parents that attended. That's the biggest turnout we've had in a couple of years. But lots of good feedback that night, had a lot of good conversation with parents, and so we appreciate all of them, as Ms. Donna said, taking the time out, because I know it's tough to get out after work, or some people have to rearrange schedules in order to get out there on those nights. So we really appreciate them taking the time to do that and look forward to seeing them more as the school year goes on. Also, we did have the ACT on Tuesday, that ACT retake for seniors that was rescheduled from before fall break. We did have that, it went well. That is a challenging day for everyone. Test security is super high on those days, so we do have to kind of block those students off in one pod, but everything went well, the test was completed, and I believe we only had a couple of absences on that day, so that was a second opportunity for all of our senior students to take that test free of charge, because again, that was a state-issued exam, and so the state picked up the tab on that. That test usually costs somewhere between forty and forty-five dollars a student, so that was a nice savings for them. Most students have to go out and take that on their own for the second time, so we were appreciative of their opportunity to be able to take that a second time for free. There are still other opportunities, that is not the last ACT test, there are still many, several national ACT test dates that are left throughout the school year. It's just they have to sign up for those themselves, and they have to absorb that cost on their own, but we can help them do that, so there are still tests. They should get the results back from this test in about three and a half weeks, and it should be back in enough time for them to know if they want to register for that December testing. So we'll keep them posted on that, but ACT went well on Tuesday. A couple of things to look forward to, the Scott High Beta Club is hosting the first-ever haunted jail experience down here at the old Scott County Jail, so we're excited about that. It is our first time out of the gate with that, so it's going to be a little bit new, but I know the kids have been down there working hard, several teachers. Ms. Paula Lately, I'm not really sure how she keeps going sometimes, she's always got something new coming up, but she's jumped in there with those kids, and they are working really hard to host that haunted jail. That will be on October the twentieth and the twenty-seventh from seven-thirty until midnight, so come out those nights and get scared. On October the twenty-fourth, that's an important night for parents to know about, senior parents. That day, we will have some financial, college financial aid experts on campus, and they will be meeting with students at one-thirty that day during school. But that night, we will be hosting a FAFSA night at the Technology Department beginning at five P.M. for parents, and that's the night that we actually have state financial aid experts that are there at Technology where parents can actually come and bring their information and sit down with an expert to help them fill out those FAFSA forms. That FAFSA form is the financial aid form that must be filled out in order for them to qualify for Tennessee Promise, Pell Grants, federal student loans, all of those things. So it really is that go-to form that has to be filled out, but we know it's confusing and intimidating, so we bring the experts to help them do that, so we hope that we have a big turnout on that night for parents. We are one-hundred percent complete with Tennessee Promise applications. All seniors that qualify to complete a Tennessee application have completed a Tennessee Promise application, so we are one-hundred percent complete. We do have some seniors who do not qualify because of maybe transfer status or something like that, they don't qualify to complete a Tennessee Promise application, but anyone who qualifies has completed that at this point, so the only thing they have to do next is that FAFSA form, so we're going to help them do that as well. Just to let everyone know, on October the twenty-sixth, that is our last home football game, our last regular season game, and that will be our senior night for all sport, fall sport athletes. That will be before the game, so that will start around seven P.M. We're still not sure about our postseason lookout for the football team yet. We have a bye week this week, we don't have a football game, so we're going to be watching a couple of other competitions pretty closely and hoping that those things go our way and maybe can get us into the postseason, so we're excited about that. And last, but certainly not least, as soon as I finish here, I'm headed over to Anderson County to watch the girls' soccer team play. Very excited and very, very proud of those girls. On Thursday night of fall break, they played in the district championship, which we hosted here. We were the regular season champions in our district. We had split a game with Anderson County, and that's who we played in our district championship. We did fall there and come in as the runners-up on Thursday night, but that did get us a bid to the region tournament. We did play in that first game and won at Livingston on Monday, on Monday, and so then that put us in the region championship tonight at Anderson County, so we're very excited about that. It also guarantees our girls a first-round bid to the sectionals, so we're excited about that. This is the furthest postseason appearance that our soccer team has ever had, and so we're just so proud of those girls and excited to take this journey with them and want to encourage them to continue on. We have a lot of young players on that team, so we're really excited about the outlook, the future outlook for those girls and that we could really, this could become an annual thing, seeing our girls' soccer team in the postseason. Last year, you know, they were district champions, but fell in that first round of the region tournament, so this year we went at least one step further, and so we're going to expect to continue to go on as the years go on. But we're really excited and proud of those girls, and so that's where I'll be going tonight, and I will be sure to give them well wishes from you. So that's all that I have, unless you have questions. Thank you.
Ms. Tanya.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you so very much to Mr. Hall and the school board and the entire community and all the schools for their outpouring of love and prayers for the family of Ashlyn Moore. Give her a little emotional, sorry about that. Thank you for that. As you know, Ashlyn was a seventh grader at Birchfield. She lost her life tragically in a TV accident this weekend. I cannot stress enough, and I know these police officers will say that too, wearing those helmets is a huge deal. Following those safety rules is a huge deal, so please do that. But again, I want to thank you for allowing our students and staff the opportunity to go and pay our respects to that family today. They were very appreciative of everything, all the schools showing up, all of the prayers. They just couldn't get over how many schools and students showed up for her today, so I appreciate that. On an uptick on this, our cross-country team, kind of the reverse of Mr. Shannon at Robbins, our girls finished first in the county, our boys finished second, so I want to thank Coach Casey Efferson for such a great job that she does with these kids. Some dates to remember before our work session, on the twenty-second, we'll be having group pictures and retakes at Birchfield, so that will happen on Monday. And then the following week is the week that we wear red, I'm not going to try to say that week, for our drug-free week there, so that's going to happen. And that Monday, we're actually going to be wearing pink, and we're going to have a pink-out day for breast cancer awareness for some of our staff that have thankfully battled and overcame and defeated that ugly monster. So I don't have anything else unless you all have something for me.
Thank you. Ms. Lisa.
I was going to start out with our hearts and prayers are still with Ms. Ashlyn Moore's family in Birchfield. So we'll move on into, want to give thanks to everyone who's helping with the playground, and I want to commend the teachers, the staff, and everybody for their efforts on that. We've raised fifty-three-hundred dollars so far, so we're really excited, and we have promises, so we're waiting for some more of those, and we're getting there. It's taken a little bit, but we're getting there. Parent-teacher conferences, we had two-hundred-and-four students represented. Also, I want at this time to say thank you to Ms. Richter, the faculty and staff of the students for the renovations that they've done for our school. They painted some benches. Mr. Buddy Davison, who spent twenty-nine years driving for Huntsville. He saw a wamber driving, into an accident, but we did a bench in his honor, and it sits in the front of the school, so please stop by and see that. And that was all thanks to Scott High's department, Art Department, and Mr. Tony Duncan, his students, Ms. Shawnee Cummins, and Ms. Richter allowing them to come down, so we really appreciate that. On our regular week kickoff, we have George Jeffers coming out on October twenty-third to speak to our students, and then it will end on thirty-first with a boo dance, so invite them once they come out. Come on out, we have plenty of activities we're going to be doing all week. October twenty-fifth, we have our birthday celebration, and October twenty-ninth through November second, we have a book fair for the school. It'll be in our library, hosted by Patricia Terry. November fifth, we have student flu shots, thanks to Mr. Schumaker and the Health Department, so that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you. Mr. Cash.
I just wanted to also say that our prayers, our thoughts and prayers are with Ashlyn Moore's family and all of Birchfield's family. Our students today had a blue and gold day, so they wore blue and gold, so we just want to know that our thoughts are with them. Our cross-country team and football team, their seasons has ended the last couple of weeks. I wanted to thank all the players and coaches for all their hard work and time, and the parents for all their sacrifice that they put in. It's turning into pretty much a year-long thing with sports, and so I know how much time and sacrifice that they put in that and hard work, so I want to thank them for that. And then we go right into basketball. Basketball started up, we got a play day at Scott High and Huntsville this Saturday. Next Saturday, we'll have a play day at Sunbright, and then the season starts for Fairview on Monday, November the fifth at Birchfield, so everything will be kicking off as far as the regular season in a couple of weeks. We have on Monday, October the twenty-ninth, we're going to have a community blood drive at Fairview from nine A.M. to three. They're going to set up, and any donors that come in will receive a T-shirt and a free coupon for a free appetizer at Texas Roadhouse, so we'd like the community to come in and support that. Also, the students will be rewarded if their parent or guardian, grandparent, come in to donate blood, the student will receive a free emoji keychain, and in the class with the most donors will receive a pizza party. Our Fall Festival will be Friday, November the second, from five to eight. Looking forward to that, it's always been, the last few years, been a great event. And then, kind of on a side note, I'm kind of happy about it, we've had two bus drivers that, or two people that have gotten permits, so hopefully in the next month, my name goes down on the list. Looking forward to that, I know they've, I've really pushed them, we've tried hard, and they've opened Fall Breaks up, they've really worked hard getting the permit, so hopefully in the next month, it is a process. I'm sure Mr. Hall and Ms. Fisher Bowles here, if anybody wants to drive a bus, you know, we encourage you to apply and start working on that. I know Fisher Bowles is here a minute ago. There has been a couple that's got their license, one yesterday, and maybe one a couple of weeks ago, but then he's telling me one of them is moving, somebody's moving to Kentucky, so it's like, as soon as you get one, another one, you've got to replace them all, so it's, you know, we're trying to build it up, but I know we're working hard, I know Mr. Bowles is working really hard. And then last, I just want to wish, I know Mr. Shannon's left, but I want to wish the Robbins football team best of luck tonight, and hope they carry the banner for Scott County, and I got a good feeling that they will. Hopefully, they'll be playing next Saturday, so that's all I have, unless somebody has anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, I'm a principal of Mitch's tonight, that Robbins, the Hawks will be playing Midway tonight at six-thirty at Robbins. If you get the chance, please go down and watch that semifinal matchup, as Mr. Shannon also, Mr. Cash mentioned, that the winner of this will be representing next Saturday at Campbell County High School for the regional championship. I feel really good, I think, that Robbins has got a chance not only to win tonight, but also win next Saturday, so this is a great opportunity for Robbins and the community down there. And Ms. Richter mentioned, Scott High and the Highlanders are playing tonight, regional championship game at Anderson County at six-thirty also. As she also mentioned, they qualified for a sub-state appearance, and I was assuming that if they win tonight, the sub-state appearance will be at home. Will they get a host?
I don't...
Don't know exactly, or?
I have no idea.
I think the regional championship hosts, and then if the second-place runner-up goes on the road, but regardless, it's one game away from the state tournament, so carry the banner. These programs right now are making us proud, and wishing them the best of luck tonight in their athletic competitions. Parent-teacher conferences are probably the largest crowds we've had, best representation that we've had since I've been here. I can say that percentage-wise, it's really good. I don't have all the schools numbered in yet, but just looking at it right now, I think it's been the largest crowd turnout that we've had. That is really great. Want to, Ms. Mr. John Lately, who will be with us tonight, he's got some surgery, please keep Mr. Lately in your prayers, he'll be out in the office for about five days, so remember him, and hopefully he has a speedy recovery. Also, last but not least, in this crowd, three and some other people need to not, please keep in prayers the family of Ashlyn Moore, as Ashlyn was taken from this earth way too early in a tragic side-by-side accident. Remember the staff, the faculty, and all the students at Birchfield School, and all of the schools, all of our students that, you know, hope this doesn't happen, though this is one thing I think that nobody prepares you for, in this field, and just continue to uplift that school and that community and the parents. Make sure to mark your prayers. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless you all have any questions for me.
Thank you. That brings us to item seven, adoption of the agenda. In accordance with Board Policy Number 1.403, the Scott County Board of Education should adopt an agenda of all items to be acted on during the regular monthly meeting of October the eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. May I have a motion to approve the October eighteenth, two thousand eighteen agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Item nine-eight, approved budget amendments. In pursuant to Board Policy 2.201, the Scott County Board of Education needs to approve budget amendments required to balance the budget for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. This action will allow funds to be applied to areas of the budget that lack sufficient funds to complete the school year. May I have a motion to approve the following amendments? General Purpose Amendment Number Three, and Federal Amendment Number Three.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Ms. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Item nine-B, Imagination Library. In order to continue our sponsorship of the Imagination Library, the Scott County Board of Education... A, approval of the amendments for September 13th, 2018. B, approval of the financial report and bills for July and August of 2018. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Item 9A, approved budget amendments. In pursuant to Board Policy 2.201, the Scott County Board of Education needs to approve budget amendments required to balance the budget for the fiscal year 2018, 2019. This action will allow funds to be applied to areas of the budget that lack sufficient funds to complete the school year. May I have a motion to approve the following amendments? General Purpose Amendment Number Three and Federal Amendment Number Three.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item 9B, Imagination Library. In order to continue our sponsorship of the Imagination Library, the Scott County Board of Education must approve payment of a $2,000 annual fee. May I have a motion to continue our sponsorship of the Imagination Library and pay the $2,000 annual fee?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item 9B, Business Trip Accident Insurance. The renewal agreement for the business trip accidental death coverage insurance is due. This plan covers all full-time employees and board members for $100,000 accidental death, bus drivers $20,000, and substitute bus drivers $10,000 while they are on official school business. May I have a motion to renew the business trip accidental death insurance policy at the cost of $737 for the 2018, 2019 school year? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Item 9G, Request Bids. In accordance with Scott County Board of Education Policy Number 2.806, concerning bids and quotations, all purchases of supplies, materials, equipment, and contractual services in excess of $10,000 shall be based on competitive bids. May I have a motion to request that the Scott County Finance Director bid the following items, paving the area for Scott High School?
Question?
Yes, we're going to put concrete this way.
Concrete, absolutely. Motion.
Second.
Right, make second, first and second, we're discussing, that's why he didn't answer the question.
Okay.
Any more questions?
That was my question after I came to the floor.
Six inches of concrete.
Any other discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item 9G, Request Bids. In accordance with Scott County Board of Education Policy Number 2.806, concerning bids and quotations, all purchases of supplies, materials, equipment, and contractual services in excess of $10,000 shall be based on competitive bids. May I have a motion to request that the Scott County Finance Director bid the following items, paving the area for Scott High School?
Question?
Yes, we're going to put concrete this way.
Concrete, absolutely. Motion.
Second. Right, make second, first and second, we're discussing, that's why he didn't answer the question.
Okay.
Any more questions?
That was my question after I came to the floor.
Six inches of concrete.
Any other discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item 9G, Award Bids. Bids for the entrance doors, bus ramp, and air conditioner for Scott High School were opened on October 8th, 2018 by the Finance Committee and referred to the Board for consideration. May I have a motion to award the following bids? Entrance doors and bus ramp at Scott High School, Stanley Builders, for $67,449. Air conditioner at Scott High School Cafeteria, Interstate Mechanical Service, $18,140.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item 9G, Award Bids. Bids for the entrance doors, bus ramp, and air conditioner for Scott High School were opened on October 8th, 2018 by the Finance Committee and referred to the Board for consideration. May I have a motion to award the following bids? Entrance doors and bus ramp at Scott High School, Stanley Builders, for $67,449. Air conditioner at Scott High School Cafeteria, Interstate Mechanical Service, $18,140.
I'll make a motion. Is there nobody else? How do we bid under a process? I mean, Stanley gets every single bid, and...
They're the only, they're the only bidder that's going to send out.
What do they, how do they send their bid process?
We send it to the Finance, and they send it out on the bid list to people.
How does Finance, do their bidding process to advertise for the...
It's been more locally, lots of papers, and it goes on a serve list that goes out, and it's, you know, people either take the bid, I don't even think, just, I haven't tried to even ask the people to...
The last time, I'll tell you this, the last time when we did the first renovation, and we went through this process in the spring last year, and Alan Hill was with us the day that we were there, that they actually hosted the, I guess, open house for people to come and look. He actually called, like, three places while we, he had done it before, but he even called them, because nobody showed up. And so, while we were there, he called, like, three different places trying to get those guys to come out. So, I mean, I witnessed that, and I just wanted to...
I have a question, too. What are they exactly doing at the bus ramp?
It's on those doors, on the 102 and upon replacing those doors.
Okay, just the doors at the bus ramp.
Okay, yeah. All the doors in the front of the building, the entrance doors, door going out to the bus ramp, make a single order to that.
That's central, and then, so there's like, one, two, three, and then that other, you know, the front set of, about the pot machines.
We planned this back in June, when we started the other area, safety project, we did, we bid them separately.
Okay. So, is it, how many doors does this change?
One, two, three, four. Four on the, on that drink machine side, what used to be the main entrance on that side, there would be four there. One set of double doors on each bus ramp, so that's four, five, six, seven, eight, and then that central bus ramp door to make it a double and a solid, so that would be nine, ten.
Any more discussion?
There's no way to do, both of these are together.
Can we break it down and do one off the other?
Me personally, I'd have to go ahead and get it done. It needs to be done.
The air conditioner, the air conditioner's got to be...
Yeah, the air conditioner's got to be done.
These need to be done also, too.
I agree, but I don't see $67,000.
I don't either.
I mean, the last doors was...
We tried.
Eighty thousand, seventy-seven thousand, and I just kept going. We got it done, I agree, but I just think that's, and I made a motion, I just, I feel that it's got to be done, but I also want to say that I don't see a $67,000 worth of work.
I don't know if he managed to bid yet, I can't answer that question. I didn't know that, like I said, we were getting the first project, like Ms. Richter said. Mr. Hill called three people coming that day, I think one group showed, then he also called people all the way there that weren't interested, otherwise it's the same thing on the bid list as it goes out. And I know that even Ms. Abbott tried to get people to bid, too.
We got a motion at the same?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Waiting on the real call then.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item 9K, Consent Agenda Items. In accordance with the Scott County Board of Education Policy Number 4.403, the Board of Education may include routine and non-controversial items on a consent agenda, which may be adopted by a single vote without discussion. Any item on the consent agenda may be removed and placed on the regular agenda for further consideration at the request of any board member. May I have a motion to approve the following amendments? General Purpose Amendment Number Three and Federal Amendment Number Three.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item 9G, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item 9G, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the following bids? Entrance doors and bus ramp at Scott High School, Stanley Builders, for $67,449. Air conditioner at Scott High School Cafeteria, Interstate Mechanical Service, $18,140.
I'll make a motion. Is there nobody else? How do we bid under a process? I mean, Stanley gets every single bid, and...
They're the only, they're the only bidder that's going to send out.
What do they, how do they send their bid process?
We send it to the Finance, and they send it out on the bid list to people.
How does Finance, do their bidding process to advertise for the...
It's been more locally, lots of papers, and it goes on a serve list that goes out, and it's, you know, people either take the bid, I don't even think, just, I haven't tried to even ask the people to...
The last time, I'll tell you this, the last time when we did the first renovation, and we went through this process in the spring last year, and Alan Hill was with us the day that we were there, that they actually hosted the, I guess, open house for people to come and look. He actually called, like, three places while we, he had done it before, but he even called them, because nobody showed up. And so, while we were there, he called, like, three different places trying to get those guys to come out. So, I mean, I witnessed that, and I just wanted to...
I have a question, too. What are they exactly doing at the bus ramp?
It's on those doors, on the 102 and upon replacing those doors.
Okay, just the doors at the bus ramp.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. All the doors in the front of the building, the entrance doors, door going out to the bus ramp, make a single order to that.
That's central, and then, so there's like, one, two, three, and then that other, you know, the front set of, about the pot machines.
We planned this back in June, when we started the other area, safety project, we did, we bid them separately.
Okay. So, is it, how many doors does this change?
One, two, three, four. Four on the, on that drink machine side, what used to be the main entrance on that side, there would be four there. One set of double doors on each bus ramp, so that's four, five, six, seven, eight, and then that central bus ramp door to make it a double and a solid, so that would be nine, ten.
Any more discussion?
There's no way to do, both of these are together.
Can we break it down and do one off the other?
Me personally, I'd have to go ahead and get it done. It needs to be done.
The air conditioner, the air conditioner's got to be...
Yeah, the air conditioner's got to be done.
These need to be done also, too.
I agree, but I don't see $67,000.
I don't either.
I mean, the last doors was...
We tried.
Eighty thousand, seventy-seven thousand, and I just kept going. We, we got it done, I agree, but I just think that's, and I made a motion, I just, I feel that it's got to be done, but I also want to say that I don't see a $67,000 worth of work.
I don't know if he managed to bid yet, I can't answer that question. I didn't know that, like I said, we were getting the first project, like Ms. Richter said. Mr. Hill called three people coming that day, I think one group showed, then he also called people all the way there that weren't interested, otherwise it's the same thing on the bid list as it goes out. And I know that even Ms. Abbott tried to get people to bid, too.
We got a motion at the same?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Waiting on the real call then.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item 9K, Consent Agenda. Mr. Steelcocks, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Well, we're going to something else. On our meeting, is this right? Got us arriving on Friday?
Yes. On the Thursday is the leadership stuff we've never gone to.
Well, I mean, it starts Friday morning.
Friday, Friday morning, but what we, that's part of the leadership. Friday, actually, the conference starts on Friday afternoon, like, 5:15.
Okay, that's what I was...
Yeah, yeah. Now, if you'd like to go, something, you've never gone to the leadership part?
Last year, we went on down on Thursday, though, right?
Aye, one time I can remember.
Because we started, we started Friday morning.
I don't remember, honestly.
The reason I say that was, it will be Saturday before we can register.
They'll, they'll register when you get there on Friday, yeah, because I remember last time we went down, I remember what daddy...
Okay.
Now, if you'd like for me to call?
No, I'm good. No, I'm fine.
So, we'll be down there Friday night and Saturday night?
Yeah, and back on Sunday.
Do you have anything else for Mr. Steelcocks?
No.
Okay. I'll bet you not.
I don't.
Well, I would just like to encourage the public to think about making donations to our handicapped accessible playground. We've got folks, Ms. Lisa and all the staff are working really hard, and we've had several churches to send in some donations, individuals that are sending in, and, you know, if all of us were little, that project's going to get done. And Huntsville serves the children from all over the county, the handicap, physically handicapped, all over the county, plus all the children there will get to use that playground. And so, I just want to remind everyone that there's no little amount that you can send into the school, you know, build this project, and we'll all be doing it together. Okay? Thank you, Linda. Do you have anything, Linda?
No.
Gary?
Nothing.
Okay. Item 9K, Adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item 9G, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the following amendment of board policies? Second Reading, Policy Number 1.701, School District Planning. 4.206, Homebound Instruction. 6.200, Attendance. 6.2001, Attendance during post-secondary visits.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Mr. Steelcocks?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Sexton?
Aye.
Item 9G, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the following grants? Deafers Grant, $10,000, and SPA RC Grant from THC, $55,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?